All right, can everyone hear us? Hello? All right, we'll try it again. Can everyone hear us?
I can hear you.
All right. Sounds good. The time is now seven o'clock and I will call this meeting to order. May we have roll call, please?
Mayor Rieckel?
Here.
Trustee Brittenall?
Here.
Trustee Claussen?
Here.
Trustee Flores?
Here.
Trustee Hanahan?
Here.
Trustee Seibert?
Here.
All right, may we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, be seated. The first item on tonight's agenda is public comments. Persons desiring to make a public comment on items not on the agenda, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program, or she/they any phone calls or emails in regards to non-agenda items.
No, sir, I did not hear from anyone.
Okay.
I do not show any raised hands, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. I didn't check to see if anyone signed in.
Nobody signed in.
Nobody signed in for non-agenda items, okay.
No, you're okay.
Okay, the next item on the agenda then is the consent agenda, which contains the minutes of the April 10th, 2023 Board of Trustees meeting, the come and go renewal of Colorado beer and wine liquor license. Also has Resolution Number 12, Series 2023, a resolution supporting the execution of the agreement for a Garfield County federal mineral lease district grant in the amount of $24,359, for a total project cost of $24,359, in order to offset the costs associated with the purchase of new equipment for a new police vehicle for the town of Silt, Garfield County, state of Colorado. And item number four is Resolution Number 13, Series 2023, a resolution supporting the execution of the agreement for a Garfield County federal mineral lease district grant in the amount of $450,000, for a total project cost of $27,948,000, in order to offset the costs associated with the purchase and engineering for a water treatment facility for the town of Silt, Garfield County, state of Colorado. Would anyone like to discuss any of those individually or make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Motion to approve the consent agenda by trustee Claussen, seconded by trustee Hanahan. And all is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do any board members have any conflicts of interest with agenda items tonight? None for me either. Do we have any agenda changes this evening from staff or board?
Nothing from the staff.
Okay. All right, moving right along, the next item on the agenda is the appointment of a new mayor pro tem. Since we don't have one, we have to appoint one at this point. My only clarification, just, I, for me, there's somebody on this board that I'd like to appoint to that position, but should we wait for potentially the new board member to get appointed to the board?
I think-
That was my initial thought.
From what it says on this, though, according to State Subsection 2.5 of the Home Rule Charter, you have to appoint the mayor pro tem at the next regular meeting.
Okay.
We can ask- It would also, I would think it would make sense to appoint an existing board member versus somebody that's new, because in the fact, in the case that they have to run a meeting or any of those things, not being familiar with the process, it may not make sense to have that person in that position at this time anyway.
Okay.
Would be my thoughts.
The only risk is that the votes tie, right? In theory? Could be three, four, and three against.
Yeah. I don't think that, I mean, who knows, then you just re-
In which case, we could just discuss it and figure it out.
Yeah, just figure it out, yeah.
Just may have to have a vote or two, but our motion or two, or however we need to do it.
Okay.
I guess for clarification, how long is the mayor pro tem seat? Is it for the duration of the rest of the, I guess, his term? Or is it yearly, or?
It would go for the remainder of his term.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion in the process of appointing a mayor pro tem? Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion to appoint?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Derek Hanahan in that he has run the meetings a couple times when you've been out and Kyle wasn't available already. Felt like he did a good job. He tends to have a level head and is very detail oriented, so I feel like he'd be good for the position.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Can I completely just space your last?
Hanahan.
No, Hanahan.
Flores.
Flores?
Been a long day, I'm sure.
It's not Samuel.
Trustee Sam.
Trustee Samuel, yeah, okay. We have a motion by trustee Brittenall to appoint trustee Hanahan as the mayor pro tem, seconded by trustee Flores. All is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. Congratulations.
Now you're in the warm seat. The mayor's got the hot seat, you get the warm seat.
The lukewarm seat. Congratulations.
Yep, thank you all.
Congratulations.
Okay, well, that was quick and painless.
Got to make that puck drop.
Yeah, there we go. All right.
Talk about a hot seat.
Yeah. All right, I'm going to declare adjournment as the Board of Trustees and convene as the Silt Housing Authority. You get to take over now.
This is practice now, right?
Yeah.
So I will now call the Silt Housing Authority Board Meeting to order. It is, sorry, it is 7:10 PM and I will call the meeting for the Silt Housing Authority to order. And Ms. Strauss?
Very well.
For the purpose of her updating us, I'll turn it over to Town Administrator Lehman.
Thank you. So Cheryl Strauss, the executive director of the Garfield County Housing Authority is with us and we should have given you a good chair. We've got so many here around here. So, anyway, so Cheryl's just going to give us kind of a heads up what's going on over at Silt, Silt Senior Housing, and she can tag team a little bit with Trey on physical plant because he's obviously been over there and knows kind of what's going on over there as well. But I wanted, for those of you who maybe haven't met Cheryl, to at least get a chance to hear her talk a little bit about the program, how we work together to make this a good living situation for folks, and also who we serve, so, and some of the challenges that we have upcoming. So Cheryl, take it away.
Okay. Can everyone hear me?
No. Slide that microphone a little bit.
So, I am Cheryl Strauss. I am the executive director of the Garfield County Housing Authority. I've been working for the Housing Authority for 13 years. I was their director of accounting, of finance, until three years ago when I took over the directorship. Silt Senior Housing is managed by the Garfield County Housing Authority. What does the council know about Silt Senior Housing and the relationship with the Housing Authority? Anything? No? Okay. So, about, about 26 years ago, the council had asked the Housing Authority to manage Silt Senior Housing for them. Basically, what we do is we take care of everything at Silt Senior Housing with the exception of maintenance. That guy over there, Trey, does that for us. Everything else the Housing Authority does. Silt Senior Housing is a 20-unit property that houses low-income seniors. When I say low income, I mean anything 30% of AMI, that's area median income, or lower. So we're talking about a group of people who have very, very small income. The project is actually set up as a project-based housing unit with HUD. Basically, what that means is that unlike the Section 8 program, where they have a voucher that they can take anywhere in the United States, the voucher stays with Silt Senior Housing, it never moves. So if someone moves, they either have, they have to give up their voucher and get a Section 8 voucher, or they lose their voucher altogether. So that voucher will go in, go to whomever the next person that is leased up for Silt Senior Housing. So what we do is we take care of all of the HUD documentation that has to be done on an annual basis as a recertification for each person that's in there. We collect the rents. We pay a certain percentage of those rents. 85% of those rents go to the town of Silt. A specific amount of that, I think it is, Trey, I don't know, do you know what the percentage is that's supposed to go into the maintenance for Silt Senior Housing? I think it's 30% of whatever is given, whatever rents that are paid. 30% of that is to go into, per contractor, to go into a maintenance account for, specifically for Silt Senior Housing. And so basically, we do all the work except for maintenance. We handle all of the, either complaints from the tenants. We handle all of the situations with either late rents or rents that aren't paid. And of course, they're all set around the HUD guidelines. So whatever those HUD guidelines are, the nice thing about project-based vouchers is that unlike Section 8 vouchers, which are set through HUD for each area for guidelines of a percentage of AMI, our payment standards are set at a cap. And the nice thing about project-based vouchers is that each year, a project-based voucher property can ask for an increase to whatever that may be. So if our area median income in Garfield County raises, then we can raise those project-based house, project-based vouchers, rents to whatever that new area median income is. So if the area median income was like, for instance, 675, and it went to 822, we could increase the rents that HUD will pay, which is 70%, approximately, because with seniors, it also is based on whether they have medical issues, those are deducted off of their portion of the rent, HUD covers those, and how the utilities are set. If the tenant pays all of the utilities, then HUD covers those utilities with what's called a utility reimbursement, so they will pay a certain portion of their utilities. And so then we would be able to raise rents up to that 822. And HUD would pay 70% of that approximately, and the tenant pays approximately 30% of that. HUD allows project-based vouchers to be on a 40-year cycle. After that 40 years, those project-based vouchers become Section 8 vouchers. And then what happens at that point is that the rents are now dictated by whatever HUD sets for our area. I can't remember, we renewed it for another 20 years in 2018. So that's what, 2038, something like that, is when that last section of project-based vouchers will be. And I don't know about you, but I don't plan on being here then. So, somebody else is going to have to worry about. But anyway, that's kind of a breakdown of what, of what the Housing Authority does for Silt Senior Housing. We charge right now a management fee of 15% of whatever the total rents are. Questions? That covers about what we do.
Yeah, thank you. How does one, you know, apply to get in, you know, something like that? Is it, do you apply for Silt or rifle, or do you just?
Yes, yes. Housing authorities have what is called a waitlist, which is required by HUD. And anybody who, what our application does is it lists all of the properties that we have, which are project-based vouchers. We have one in Carbondale, we have this one here, we have two in Newcastle, and there's another one. Is there one in Glenwood? Not yet. I'm working, currently working with five developers who are hoping to be able to get CHAFA funding for building in Garfield County within the next year. So we'll see how that goes. But yes, there's a, there is an application. You fill out what we call a pre-application, which is just like a two-page application. That puts you, and what basically that does is we check income, to make sure that you're income-qualified. And then, then what happens is you actually go on the list, and then when one opens, we send out letters and say, we have this opening, are you still interested? And if you are, we need you to fill out a full application, which then includes things like birth certificates, social security cards, those kinds of things, updated income information. And so all of that is filled out and then sent in, and basically it's first come, first served. Whoever gets their paperwork in first and is still income-qualified, they basically get the unit. But they all go on the list. It is, it is date and time is how it's put onto the list. So even with the pre-application, if, say, Mary gets hers in before Joe does, then Mary goes on the top of the list and Joe would go underneath her. And then we have a list, usually, for many, many years, we had quite a long list. Right now, the list is not very long. I think there's only like 13 on our Silt Senior Housing application, or waiting list right now. There's not, yeah. But-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
But what happens with senior housing is a lot of times, unless, unfortunately, they are deceased or they have to move to exclusive care unit, they don't move. They just, I mean, at that age, who wants to move? So basically, they don't turn over quickly like they would in another portion of HUD housing, basically.
Oh, okay, because, yeah, that was my next question, so.
They don't turn over very fast. Occasionally, we have someone who, you know, will move out because they're moving in with their family member. We occasionally have somebody who, you know, will be going into long-term care. I don't think we've had anybody actually pass in Silt Senior Housing. The one in Parachute, the Valley Senior Housing, we've had several people pass in their units there.
I have two questions about the waitlist. The waitlist is facility-specific. Silt has one, there's no sharing of?
Project-based vouchers have their own waitlist. Section 8 vouchers, which are the vouchers that is, are given to the participant, not to the property, those do have just one huge waitlist. But all property-based, or project-based properties have their own waitlist.
And are all of the senior housing facilities in Garfield County project-based?
No, no. And in fact, something that a lot of people don't know is that the Housing Authority does not take care of all of them. Each, so for instance, Rifle Senior Housing is owned by the city of Rifle. And so they maintain all of theirs. Now, we have Section 8 vouchers in there, and we have property-based vouchers in there. And let's see, in Newcastle, at Lakota, they're all property-based. Some properties have, the one in Carbondale has eight property-based vouchers in it, and the rest are all Section 8 vouchers.
I don't want to take this too far off the rails, but I'm curious, has there been any conversation about unifying behind one model for the different facilities? I can imagine at my own age, this being difficult to navigate. I can't imagine trying to do it as a senior citizen. And then knowing that, in the case of the Silt Housing Authority, that it's time and date-based, so you have to act quickly. And you have to do everything 100% correctly. That seems a difficult thing to negotiate.
So you don't have to do everything 100% correctly because the staff will help people fill all of that out, especially our seniors. Because you're right, it's very difficult for me, after being in this industry for almost 14 years, it's difficult for me to navigate it. And we just came back from HUD conference and found out that they're changing the rules on us one more time. And so they have a habit of doing that on a regular basis. So the staff will, if it's something that's put in, staff call, says, this hasn't, you know, this is what we need, you need to follow up with this, those kinds of things. So the staff, and actually, what we've gotten to doing is we've started inviting our seniors to just come into the office and let us help walk them through it. It just seems easier.
Easier for them, easier for your team.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Now, to answer your first question, when the prior executive director was here, she looked into what is called a regional housing authority, which is where all of the housing authorities in one particular region fall under the same HUD umbrella. Let's just say that housing authorities are overprotective of their properties. And it just, and in fact, we've tried to do it just recently with a coalition that's come out of Aspen, the Pickens, Aspen area, and it just, it just doesn't happen. It just does not happen. Which for me is kind of, I really can't understand, because we're supposed to be here to help people get housed, the low-income get housed. That's what our mission is. But for some reason, we can't get everybody on the same page, unfortunately.
I have one other quick question.
Sure.
Best guess, if you have it available, what's the average length of time on the waitlist?
For senior? I would say nine months to 18 months.
That's it?
Depending. It all depends. At Valley Senior Housing in Parachute, we had three of them turn over all at once. All of a sudden, we had three empty units. Silt does not seem to turn over quite that quickly. But we had someone who had passed, we had someone who had to go into long-term care, and then we had someone whose family convinced them that they needed to move back to California and live with them. So all of a sudden, we had three empty ones. At Silt, it's usually one here and then maybe one there and maybe one there. There was a time in 2019 where we had no one on our waitlist for Silt. Didn't have a soul. But now we're starting to get, people, the baby boomers are starting to get old. That's, that's-
We all are.
So, anyway, yeah, I actually, I actually could, I could actually apply if I wasn't full-time.
Better than the alternative, though.
Yes, yes, exactly, exactly. So, yeah. We have had, I think in the last, well, since 2020, since COVID, we didn't have anybody move in 2020 and 2021. In 2022, I think Crystal told me there were three openings, the whole year. And we've only had one opening this year. So they're pretty well staying, staying put.
I'm amazed that the, the average wait time is that short.
Now, if you're talking Section 8, I've got over 600 people on the waiting list. And that's, we're telling people 18 months to two years, and that's actually not accurate anymore because we have no housing stock for people to rent. None at all. It is almost impossible to find a place to rent in Garfield County right now, which is one of the reasons we're trying to work with developers to see if we can't get something done in the next few years.
Thanks.
You're welcome, Derek. Anybody else?
Unless you guys-
Go ahead.
I guess, you know, it'll probably be part of the discussion reading this, but in terms of, you know, if, if it needs, you know, a lot of repairs, which ours does, I mean, do you guys help with grants and stuff like that, or is that?
The Housing Authority does not. One of the things that I am looking at right now is that the Silt, or the Valley Senior Housing property needs to have, what we would like to do with that property is put in the walk-in showers, because right now, everything is the old tubs. And for the elderly to get into those old tubs is, it's a chore. It's a chore. And so one of the things that I am looking at is getting funding from the state of Colorado. I, currently, tomorrow, actually, I will be talking with a consultant, and that's what he does. He has worked for HUD, he has worked for CHAFA, which of course is the Colorado Finance. And he has worked for DOLA, which is the Division of Labor, and DHS, the Division of Housing. And one of the things that he's helping me look at is called CEB, CEGB, BG grants, CEBG grants. And don't ask me what that means. All I know is the last part of it is block grants, but I would say it's the Colorado. And apparently, they have a lot of funding that is not used, simply because the only people who can apply for it are municipalities and counties. As the Housing Authority cannot apply for it, so I'm going to have to go to the county or the town of Parachute to put in the application for us. And so it is a match. It depends on, you know, what, what type you get, what type of funding you get as to what the match amount is. And that's one of the things I'll be talking to Andy about tomorrow, is what that would look like for the Housing Authority. And I did tell Jeff that I would be more than happy to share whatever information I can get with Trey and Jeff and, and the trustees, if they would like me to come back and share that information.
No questions. So I think the board's all aware that we've got the, we didn't talk about the plumbing, plumbing and electrical issue that we have over there. So we've, we've been talking about that for, since pre-COVID, anyway. And think we, you know, probably need to start working on it and maybe pick that back up. So Cheryl's been gracious enough to talk, you know, get back to us on this other thing. And we've talked to CHAFA, too, about grants, and there's a lot of housing money out there, and nobody wants to see, I don't think anyone wants to see this project go to a developer who would, you know, buy it and turn it into a for-profit project. So we're going to come up with the best-case scenario to try to keep it in, you know, where it is now.
CHAFA does have an avenue that would allow us to apply for funding to pay for a consultant. So they do have an avenue for that. So that's something else that I'm looking at, is what that would, what that- So that's something else that I'm looking at is what that would, what that would look like to see if, you know, the Housing Authority could, you know, could have the funding for that. And if we also have the funding for a match. I don't know that I would want to go to the county and ask for a match at this point. And I, and I won't unless I absolutely have to. But CHAFA does have funding that isn't always used for this type of consulting, for paying for that. It's usually only, I think, one of the things that they are going to want, both CHAFA or DOLA is going to want, is they are going to want us to do a, an updated CNA. And so basically, we would have somebody come out, look at the property, give us a 20-year, this is what needs to be changed immediately, this is what can wait two years, this can wait five years, this can wait 10 years, on out. Those would, that would have to be updated because I don't think Silt has had one done in, well, since I started working for the Housing Authority, I know they haven't had one done. And Parachute had one done seven years ago, but they want it within a year. And so that usually is around 2,000, 2,500, 3,000 is basically what a CNA will cost you. And CHAFA has funding for that as well. So those are a couple of things that I will be talking to Andy about because he has knowledge on those things tomorrow.
Oh, okay. And do you guys make periodic inspections, just out of curiosity? Do you walk through the building and say, okay, you know, this, this all needs to be, you know, looked at or?
Usually what happens is Crystal calls Trey or Trey calls Crystal and says, we've got a problem. HUD requires that we do an inspection every two years. And when I say inspection, we go and inspect for safety issues. That's what HUD's looking for, is safety issues. Do the windows open? Do the windows close? You know, is the water hot? Are there electrical outlets that don't work? Are there tripping air hazards? All of those things are the things that HUD requires that we look at every two years. And those are, those are things that we do on, and we have to do it within actually 23 months. We can't wait 24. We have to do it within 23 months. And we have a schedule of that. So every, unless, unless a property fails. And if a property fails, then there are, then there is 30 days that is given to get to where the property can pass. And then they are, the property is inspected every year for, I think it's three years, maybe five now. Three years to make sure there aren't other issues. But normally, it's every, it's every two years, every 23 months. And those have to be, those have to be reported to HUD. And if they are not, we get fined. So you can bet we do them.
Okay, thank you, yeah. I have one other question. Well, let's just say, you know, I'm not saying monetary wise, but let's just say hypothetically, we decide that building's too expensive. We sell it and we build new senior housing. And are you guys part of that process? Or how does that, how would that work?
It would depend on what you're requiring, what you're requesting. We don't fund it. HUD does not fund it. If you decided to do that and wanted to make the property a project-based voucher property, just like the one you have is, then that takes an application to HUD through the Housing Authority. And we do all of the footwork on that, do all of the footwork on that. And like I said, right now, I'm working with five developers who have asked for at least eight to 15 project-based vouchers for their properties. Now, that said, CHAFA is stingy, is the word I'm going to use, with their, with their grants, especially the 9% grants. So you will find that they will. So last year over here, there was one grant given. Two years ago, there was two grants given, but one of them was a, was a secondary project from the first. So we rarely get more than one grant over here and it just depends on where it is. Now, 2019, there was one in Carbondale and the one in Riffle. Were both at the same time, which is very unusual. They know that we have a desperate need for rental properties here. But because other areas have a higher population, the higher the population, the more credit CHAFA gives to grants in higher, in higher population areas.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Now, DOLA and DOLA, which is Division of Housing, also has grant money, which is not CHAFA money, okay? They have several different programs that you can apply for grants with. And then the state has issued decision on Proposition 123. And that funding is supposed to be able to be applied for. Well, we can apply for it now, but they won't be actually taking action on it until probably November is when they'll probably start taking action on it. And those are, it has a variety of things that it will cover. And one of the things that the Housing Authority is looking at is increasing, our Housing Authority does several things. We administer the Affordable Housing Program for the county, for the town of, or for the town of Carbondale and for the city of Glenwood Springs. We do their affordable housing. And one of the things that we are looking at is we also have a down payment assistance program for people who are buying homes. And we are looking at getting additional funding through that Proposition 123 so that we can give more funds out to people in Garfield County who are looking to purchase homes. That's one of the big things that 123 is looking at. Whereas, but I also know that, that Proposition 123 has a lot more to it than what, and that's one of the things I'm talking to Andy about. Because I was really excited when I saw it and then he said, hmm, you might want to back up on that one just a few minutes until we have a chance to look at it because it may be more, it may be, it may not actually help us for anything other than the down payment assistance. Or it may be very, very difficult to get the funding. Where we might have a better chance of getting this CEGB money than we would Proposition 123.
Any other questions from anyone? All right. Thank you very much for your time and for all the information and details. If I wanted to learn more or tour the, the space, I can reach out to you.
Yes, yes. You can pull up our website. I think I actually have cards with me for a change, too. Trey, did you want to add anything about the plumbing and the electrical, anything with that?
With the plumbing, when we get into, when we get the grants and everything, we'll probably need all fixtures as well because we're the same as the Parachute one was. All of ours are step-in cups. We do have one complete ADA compliant unit. Or it used to be ADA compliant, it might not meet the new standards. So when we do any kind of improvements or upgrades over there, we might have to renovate that apartment as well to meet the new ADA standards. And the reason for the electrical, it's the original electrical. And I figured if we are in there ripping the walls apart to do plumbing, we might as well upgrade the electrical while we're in there instead of coming back a couple of years later and ripping the walls apart again to do electric.
Especially because we have to displace the person while we're doing it, right?
Yes. That's, that's going to be one of the biggest costs or biggest hurdles is figuring out how to do the work and move people out of their units for extended periods of time while we get this done, once we get the funding figured out.
Well, and one of the things we found out with our ADA unit in Parachute was that the electrical was no longer code. So it all had to be replaced.
Where did they put everyone while they were doing it?
This particular unit has been empty. The person that was in it unfortunately passed. And so when she passed, we closed the unit down. At that point, we could have stayed with the ADA unit, ADA standards. But now with the new UFFIS, they call it UFFIS standards, everything had to be changed, everything. So one of, one of the issues we were having with ours is that it did have a walk-in shower in it. Unfortunately, the bathroom is not big enough for a wheelchair. You have to have a five-foot turnaround in it. So we've had to move the sink into the bedroom. So there are, there are ways around it. But yes, the building inspector, both the electrical and the building, the electrical inspector and the building inspector both said, this has got to go. So we ripped drywall out and just replaced everything simply because it wasn't going to pass. There was no point in leaving it in there. And what we did, we have had, we have had to displace people before because of plumbing. We've had some, they had some flooding issues down there. And so tenants heard the water running, but they didn't bother to call anybody until it was coming up through the floors. And so, and so we did displace people. And one of the things that we found is that, as the Housing Authority, is that the hotels in Parachute have been very graciously worked with us to lower the, the price of a rental, to rent the rooms while we had displaced seniors.
Nice.
So it might be something you, we have a hotel here. We have a couple of them.
And they owe us one. Trey, any other comments or updates about electrical or plumbing?
Nope, not at the moment.
No other questions?
I have a question for. How oft, I mean, I know everything's 40 years old over there and it needs to be redone, but how often do you guys actually get called out for, you know, like stoppages or leaks or things like that?
Knock on wood, leaks haven't been very often. The one today is probably the first one outside of like a leaky faucet or anything like that in a while. But as for stoppages and drain clogs, I bet we get called out at least once a month, if not more, on that. One of the biggest issues is it wasn't designed to have garbage disposals. And they were allowed to put garbage disposals in. So as the garbage disposals die, we do not replace them because the plumbing wasn't built to handle that.
No, yeah, then that's a great idea to pull those out when they fail.
Okay, great. Well, again, thank you very much for your time and all the detailed information. We really appreciate it.
Thank you for inviting me. And if you would like me to come back, just let me know.
Sounds great.
It was a pleasure to meet all of you. And everybody stay safe and healthy.
Thank you.
Okay, the time is now 7:44. And I will adjourn the Silt Housing Authority meeting so that we can reconvene the Board of Trustees meeting. And I'll turn it back over to Mayor Reichel.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the second reading of Ordinance Number One, Series 2023. In order to the Town of Silt, Colorado, granting a cable system franchise to Comcast of Colorado. And I will turn this over to our town attorney.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. On second reading tonight, we have ordinance number one as mentioned, and it adopts a 10-year-long franchise agreement with Comcast. That gives Comcast a non-exclusive right to utilize the town's right-of-way to provide its services. Most of the franchise agreement relates to that. Other items are part of just federal law allowing telecommunications systems. And in return for these rights, the town receives a 5% franchise fee from Comcast. We started negotiating this over a year ago, just took a while. I think we went through a lot of the details at your last meeting and we had a Comcast representative. So if there's any other questions that have come up since then, I'll happy to answer them.
Anybody have any questions?
None here.
Okay.
I have no questions.
If we have no questions, this is a public hearing. So the time is 7:46 PM and I will open up the public hearing in regards to Ordinance Number One, Series 2023. Persons desiring to make a comment on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or sheelany phone calls or emails in regards to this agenda item.
No, sir, I did not hear from anyone.
I do not have any raised hands, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Anyone in the public like to speak on this agenda item? All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open up to further discussion by the board or in motion.
I have, I have a quick question. Did that language get cleaned up? I'm forgetting where it was, when it said included the library as well.
That was in, that was a mistake in my memo and I apologize for that, but I did clean that up for the memo that's in your packet tonight.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
That's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the second reading of Ordinance One, Series 2023 as presented. Second.
Motion by Trustee Seifert to approve the second reading of Ordinance Number One, Series 2023. Seconded by Trustee Brittenall, all's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Then next up is the second reading of Ordinance Number Two, Series 2023. In order to the Town of Silt, Colorado approving the sale of town-owned property located at 1555 River Frontage Road, north of the Holiday Inn Express, and property unneeded for any governmental purpose. And I will turn this over to our attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board of Trustees. Ordinance Number Two authorizes the town to go under contract for town-owned property. It owns this property for economic development purposes. I believe in this packet, we included some slides from the last meeting and, and it shows what the buyer is proposing to do. Seemed like everyone supported that. And so the second reading is a contingency of actually being under contract because they know that this is a charter requirement. The public notice happened at the last, for the last meeting. The town, or the buyer has, we've signed the contract, but again, this is a contingency, you passing it on second reading. The buyer has tendered the earnest money, so that's at the title company. And they're doing their due diligence. And I believe visiting, I think it's a California group and I believe they're flying out Tuesday or Wednesday. Jeff may know more about that, I just saw an email come through. But other than that, oh, we, one of the concerns that the board had and as staff did too was we don't want to sell this property for speculation. So we wanted to get some type of insurance that they will actually build what they're representing that they're going to build. And we included a option agreement in the contract that will be signed at closing if everything moves forward. That allows the town to purchase the property back at the same purchase price six months after closing if they haven't pulled the building permit and started building yet. And the town doesn't, isn't required to buy it back, it just has that option and that option lasts for two years. So if, if we don't get any action, it's something we can discuss in the future and gives you some remedies.
All right, thank you for that. Same thing, any discussion by the board, questions, comments? Okay.
I don't have anything.
This is also a public hearing, so the time is 7:49 PM. And I will open up the public hearing for Ordinance Number Two, Series of 2023. Persons desiring to make public comment on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or sheelany phone calls or emails in regards to this agenda item.
No, sir, I did not hear from anyone.
Okay.
I do not show any raised hands, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Would anyone in the public like to speak to this agenda item? All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open up to further discussion by the board or a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number two, series twenty twenty-three. An ordinance of the town of Silt, Colorado approving the sale of town-owned property located at 1555 River Frontage Road, north of the Holiday Inn Express and property unneeded for any governmental purpose.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by trustee Clausen to approve the second reading of ordinance number two, series twenty twenty-three. And that was seconded by Mayor Protem Handrahan. All is in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Do you have anything else we need our attorney for or can we?
Jim, I was going to ask you if you could stay on for this bag fee conversation.
No problem.
Sorry, I didn't ask you earlier today.
No, no, you actually mentioned it. I'm prepared.
Oh, good.
All right.
Thank you.
Sounds good. The next item on the agenda is the first reading of ordinance number four, series twenty twenty-three. In order to the town of Silt, Colorado amending Title III of the Silt Municipal Code to provide for the clarification of the remittance schedule of the bag fee imposed by the state of Colorado. And I will turn this over to Treasurer Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is essentially just an ordinance that we're having to add to our municipal code. Putting in place the collection by vendors in town that are eligible to collect the fee. Stating that we'll, we will get 60% of those fees and that the, the vendor is allowed to keep 40% of that. And hoping that once the first and second reading comes, we'll start collecting this in the third quarter of 2023.
All right. So the, I just have a question. The six cents out of every 10 cents that the town gets. Are we required to do something specific with that? Or do you just send it to the state? Or how's this?
So we, we would actually collect that here because we don't have many vendors in town that fall under these rules. And what the, what staff has decided to do is put it towards our, our bi-annual Silt cleanup dumpsters.
Okay.
I don't think you're going to get rich off this one.
No, I don't either.
You're, and you got it right, Amy. I think the, you're codifying a state requirement. And we're also cleaning up a state mistake where the retailers would have had to hang on to the money for a year longer than I'm sure they want to and account for it. So that gets fixed too while you're codifying it.
And we're asking them to do it on a quarterly basis. And if they have less than $20 to remit, they'll hold on to that money and then remit that in the next quarter if they meet that $20 threshold.
Also, I really liked your educational pieces that I saw. A lot of our other clients, I haven't seen that. I'm sure a lot of vendors have no idea this is even happening or understand it. The Krogers and the big guys definitely do, but your mom and pops don't. And so I applaud you for, for these.
You can applaud the city of Grand Junction because I swipe that.
Plagiarism's the best way in municipal government. So good work. You found a good one.
So then just a, a random question. If we did not require our local businesses to even remit this, is there any potential penalty or backlash to the town? And my thing is this is, it's ridiculous for the two businesses we're going to have in this town to have to send us $12 checks.
Sorry to interrupt, but it would be more than the two businesses. Because if you have three or more locations in all of Colorado, you're required. So Haikyu would have to do it. Green Cross would have to do it. Golden Gate, Come and Go, Dollar General, even Good to Go. They all have more than, than three stores within the state of Colorado.
Okay. So if we didn't request anybody to pay this, what would be the backlash from the state?
My understanding is that they would have to pay it. There are, there is a caveat for the vendors that aren't required to pay it. That they can charge that just to promote plastic reduction. But then that is considered taxable income for them. So I would think that it would probably fall under that, but I would refer to the, to our town council to clarify that.
Doubt they've thought it through that far yet, so I don't know what they will do. It's a state requirement. Will, will the state come to Silt and do something about it? I don't know. I, I, my job is to help you follow the law and not tell you how to get around it. So I think what the staff has done is put this in, in an educational format to make it as easy as possible for your local vendors and the other ones that have national or, you know, more, more presence. They already know how to do it. It's, it's, they're going to program it. It's not going to be a big deal for them. So this puts it on this, you know, in the Silt's books. You educate your populace. And then, and then do something good with the minimal amount of money that comes your way.
All right. I've got, I mean, staff has done a good job putting this together. I just think the whole thing is stupid to begin with, so.
I think we can have the rectitude reflect that. You're probably not alone.
Remember from our last meeting that we were going to look into having bags made to help promote the town of Silt to kind of lean into it a little bit in, in the sense of getting more information out there and more public awareness for the town of Silt. So I think there is, there is an upside. Potentially.
Potentially, yeah.
Potentially, yeah. I, I agree with the mayor in both of his points.
Any further discussion by the board? This is a public hearing, so. All right. The time is seven fifty-seven PM and I will open up the public hearing for ordinance number four, series twenty twenty-three. Persons desiring to make a public comment on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or she'll any phone calls or emails in regards to this agenda item.
No, sir.
And I do not show any raised hands, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Would anybody in the public like to speak to this agenda item? Can you state your name and address for the record? All right. Thank you very much. The time is seven fifty-eight PM and I will close the public hearing and up to further discussion by the board or a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance four, series twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion by trustee Seifert to approve the first reading of ordinance number four, series twenty twenty-three. Seconded by trustee Brittenall. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have to have a process, but sometimes the process is stupid. Next item on the agenda is the Main Street Phase Seven and Block Twenty-three Alley Project update. And I will turn this over to Public Works Director Foner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in our meeting on March 27th, I brought the, this project in front of you. We had put it out to bid for the third time. We only had one construction company, K5, bid the project and they didn't have a complete bid at that time. And I told you that I'd bring it back to you once we had it all finalized. So this is the final bids on these two projects. K5's got the bond and, well, they went for the bond today. We signed the paperwork. The contract has been signed. They have their contractor's license now with the town of Silt. We have the CDOT right-of-way permit and they are hoping to start May 8th on Main Street with this project. And I'll answer any questions.
I've got nothing.
What is their timeframe, do you think? How long, how long will the project take, do you think?
They're hoping to start May 8th. And I believe they said they're hoping to be completed with both of them like mid-June. Or so. They're hoping to get in, knock them out and get done.
Any potential disruptions to nearby businesses, residences, anything like that? And if so, do we have a plan to do any outreach?
Yes. Whimsical Wagon will be the one that's affected most as we work in front of her business. But we have plans in place to try to get her customers parked and keep her doors open. And also, I forget her business hours now. They've changed. But there's like two or three days a week that she's not open, so they're hoping to take advantage of that. And work, work around her schedule to get so they don't disrupt her business as much. As far as the rest of them, there won't be A and G U access from Sixth Street. And then when we get into the alley, it might affect Taco Garcia a little bit because we're going to have that alley blocked. It could be interesting getting out of Columbine Liquor and Brick House Pizza. If that alley's open and you can't drive through, you gotta back out and go back out onto Main Street. So there'll be some, some issues there as we get through that alley on parking and just access. But we do have plans in place to try to negate that as much as possible.
I'm sure Whimsical Wagon's more than happy to have a little bit of a delay, access problem now versus having the problems she has in the winter time.
Yeah.
Currently.
True.
I'm assuming they'll do Main Street first?
Yes, they're planning on starting on Main Street.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. Thank you for the update. Next up is the March 2023 financial report. And I will turn this over to Treasurer Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is for the month of March. 25% of the year has elapsed. We are doing well in sales tax. Overall, we are 22% above what we had at this point last year. With sales tax, we are at a right around 30% of what we had anticipated getting for this year. So we are ahead on sales tax. Same as use tax, we're hovering at about 29%. All of our revenues are pretty much on, on target for the time of the year, the percentage that has elapsed. We're a little low in water and wastewater, but most of that is because we're anticipating the grants that we'll be receiving. So that will come up once we start spending that money and getting reimbursements from the grants. We're online with our trash fees, water fees, wastewater fees, irrigation fees. And our expenses are below what our percentage is for the year, short of the, the park impact. And that's because we've paid money for new park equipment. So it's in the budget. We don't plan on going over that, that allotted budget amount. But we're just, we're showing it at 90% at this time because we've, we've had that chunk of expense. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
The, a quick question. The sales tax numbers mostly due to online?
We get quite a bit of online, yes, quite a bit.
I mean, those numbers look great.
They do. I can't complain. I'm not complaining about that one bit.
Keep shopping online, everyone.
That's right. One item to call everyone's attention to is the fund balance, current fund balance for the Silt Housing Authority. We, given our earlier conversation, you can see it's 245,000. And given the fact that we'll probably have some, if, if we go after grants to participate in this, this repair, we're going to have some matching requirements. And so that, you know, we've got a pretty healthy fund balance in there that we can use for, for matching.
All right. Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you, Treasurer Tucker.
You're welcome.
Next up is administrative staff comments.
I'm going to make a few comments on all of my, all of my bullet points today. So I'll try to keep them, keep them pretty, pretty quick. But one thing I wanted to let you know, we were notified by Senator Bennett's office late last week that he too had selected the Silt Water Plant to move forward with the appropriations process in Congress at the 3.3 million dollar level. You'll recall that we, in my report to you, that Senator Hickenlooper had told us that our request of 2.1 million, that earmark had been, had been selected to move forward to the Appropriations Committee also. And as great a news as that is, we all have to keep in mind that Congress has to actually pass a budget in 2023 for 2024. That's got to, the budget year starts on October 1st. So that means they don't have a whole lot of time to actually get their ducks in order and pass a budget. If it does, we'll have a chance at one or both of those earmarks. I don't want to get people's hopes up because I think there's a lot that has to happen before either one of those get, makes the budget or, or, you know, if it does. But I think it's, it's promising that they, that they move those forward and thought enough of the project to move forward. You might have heard of a, of a continuing resolution, which is maybe what Congress will do, which basically just funds the government to the same level that it had this year, which is maybe possible. If we do get a continuing resolution, we won't have access to those earmarks. So just to let you know that that's going forward. On the JDS Hydro Report, that's that second opinion that we've been talking about and looking forward to. We have had a report. We went back and, and reviewed with them. The report clarified some assumptions that they made, some assumptions that we made. And kind of looked at the data that was, that they had used. And they have just today, today submitted a, a new review. And so when we have time to review that with our people and their people, then we'll come back and let you know what all that is. And we can talk a little bit more about that. But that, that's still in the, in the works. Colorado River, any questions on that? Colorado River Fire Rescue. For a long, long time, since I've been here, I was talking with the interim fire chief about the idea of, you know, developing a joint facility. My thought was to, one of my big thoughts was to, to move Public Works out of that residential area and into something where we could kind of house both our Public Works Department and a Fire Department on kind of west of town. Because they want to push their coverage area west to try to reduce some of their, forgot the initials, some of the fire insurance rates for.
ISO.
ISO, thank you. For some homeowners out west of town. So they've been kind of talking about that, I think, for a while. And then we've talked about maybe a public safety facility to include Silt PD, maybe Public Works, who knows? We think it's a long way off, but the fire, current fire chief and I, Leaf Sackett, have proposed to establish a kind of a subcommittee, two board members from this board and two board members from the Fire District Board to kind of sit down and talk about a way forward. I anticipate it's probably one, two, maybe three meetings, just to kind of shoot the breeze a little bit about what would happen. And then bring the whole thing back to you. Or maybe a joint meeting with the two boards, just to kind of talk about how this could happen and kind of get things moving. After speaking with Mayor Reichel last week, I asked Jerry Seifert, who's got a long history with the Fire District, and to participate on that committee. And then Mayor Reichel also. And then Mayor Riechel also volunteered. So unless, you know, absent any objections from the group, those two would move forward, just chatting with the other two members from the other board. And then we'd develop a kind of a plan to come back and involve everybody else. So I wanted to let you know that, that that was moving forward, if everybody buys into that.
Sounds good to me.
Okay?
Thanks to you both for jumping in.
Yes, yeah, no, I'm fine with that, but I, I was just kinda thinking, maybe in the future, bring it all to the board first. Just cause it kinda looks like, you know, people were handpicked behind, you know, behind closed doors.
Understood. The last thing I had, or actually, next to last thing I had to bring up tonight was, it's been brought up a couple times by trustee Henry Han about sustainable strategies and Deborah Figaroa. I have been talking to her over, over the time and asked her if she's, by the way, to back, back up a little bit, she's a, a grant writer, sustainable strategies does grant writing, lobbying, trying to put sources of money together with projects and, and those kinds of things. And, and to sort of develop a, a project, project management of, of that part of the, of a project. And she had, she had given us a, a proposal some time back that was, I think, $72,000 or something like that for a year's worth of work, which would be writing two to three grant proposals and, and doing some lobbying for us. At the time that I got that, we were moving forward with the SRF. We were on a very compressed timeframe and I didn't bring that to the board. I felt like at the time, that was a lot of money. We were just gone through the budget process. And I made sort of an executive decision not to bring that to you. Since then, trustee Henry Han and I've talked a little bit about it. And, and that's kinda where we're, where we are now, is I've discussed a, a little bit more with Deborah. And she's willing to come in and, and talk to the board and see how her, her work might be of use to the town of Silt. So I'm working with her now. I talked, she and I played phone tag again this week, last week. And we got together and talked briefly about how we could revise her, her proposal to maybe do the things that we really need doing in the short period of time that we have left. Or if we make the decision to push our application back to January, what she might be able to do between now and then to help us meet some of our financial goals. So I am working with her on that, hoping to have some kind of product by the next meeting. And we'll talk to her about, we, we, maybe, maybe we'll even do a work session, just to kinda shoot the breeze with her a little bit and see what, what she thinks she might be able to accomplish for us. So that's coming up. Any questions about that?
Thank you.
No, yes, thank you.
Okay. And then last but not least is that late ad that I had, I asked Sheila to put on your, your dais tonight. And I don't know that this was that big of an emergency, but I had intended for it to be in the packet and I just didn't get it done on Thursday in time. But I wanted to let you all know about how the staff has worked really hard on this code violation we had at 601 Front Street. At a shop called Perplex Styling, which is an automotive shop. We have been working with them for the, almost the entirety of their existence here in Silt to basically work with us on not blocking streets, not, you know, having, you know, junk piles and rubbish around. And it finally came to a head last month. And the, the results are in that memo and you can read that at your leisure. But the town, town staff has put in many, many hours on this through all kinds of multiple departments, including police, community development, Public Works and Administration, to put this case together. I don't wanna get into great detail tonight about all the violations that were found there. I did list some of them here, but the most egregious violations are really housing people and cooking inside of a garage that's used to, you know, to repair vehicles. And then the disposing of, of vehicles into our surface water and surface run, or, I'm sorry, not, not vehicles, disposing of oil or other fluids from the shop into our surface runoff. So the charges result and, and the guilty plea resulted in fines and fees of over $9,200. And the owner there is, says he'll comply with those, all the court orders that the court put on him, including some of the charges are building without a permit and having a building prior to obtaining a certificate of occupancy, polluting the waterworks, and the keeping of trash, junk, rubbish, among other charges. The court has, has ordered, among other things, that the business may not be operated until all the court conditions are met. The owner says that he's gonna meet those obligations within 90 days. And he would be back open and back open for business as soon as he does that. I think, given the significance of the violations, staff is considering and will consult with the town attorney, of course, but bringing the license, business license holder to the board to discuss whether you would want to temporarily or permanently revoke his business license to do business in town. And you certainly have that authority. So I wanted to, I don't, I'm not asking you to, to address that at all tonight. In fact, I'd probably rather you wouldn't, but I did want you to know that it, it is, you could see it again. Is one reason why I brought this up. But I think more importantly is that I, I wanted you to know about the time it takes to address a serious, a serious code violation and, and that the board, or that the staff really worked hard to do it. So I would entertain any questions that you might have about that, but I don't wanna talk specifically about the, the case or, or what you might do in the future.
I just had one question. Was there ever any evidence of anything illegal being dumped down the sewer? Or just, just the-
Oh, in the sewer?
Yes, in, in the sewer. Or just, you know, the drainage ditch?
I, I would say that we made some attempts to try to identify that. And I think I'd probably wanna wait to get into the specifics of that if we bring it, if we bring it back to you.
I was just curious.
We did, we did attempt to look into that.
Okay.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay.
I have a couple of things, Mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
We had Eagles View Park was supposed to open May 1st due to weather and other delays. We're probably middle of May before we get that park open. We just got the new fall protection in today and unloaded off the truck. So it's gonna take us a while to get that down, so it'll probably be middle of May. And then House Bill 1101, which just passed, that has to do with CDOT and transportation. We are currently a member of the Intermountain Transportation Planning Region, region. This bill is requiring, requiring CDOT to look at the regions and see if the lines need to be redrawn. So they're not expecting any changes, but there's a chance that our transportation planning region could change. But nobody's expecting a change of that nature. And then the last one, Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, they upgraded us to a Level 2 distribution, like I mentioned, back in January. They couldn't get us all the stuff at one time. So I've got three different notices now about sampling increases. Our lead and coppers had to go from 10 to 20, which means we have to have 40 sites listed with the state. Currently, we only have 20. So a letter went out, if you hear about a letter went out. We had to find houses that were built between 1985 and 1989 to meet the state requirement. And then we have to verify with the homeowner what kind of plumbing they had, if they've had any plumbing upgrades, to see if it qualifies to list with the state for being able to test lead and copper at their house. Cause that is a test that the homeowners have to draw for us. And that's it.
All right. Any other staff members with an update? Seeing none, we'll jump on to updates from the board and board comments, and we'll start with trustee Claus.
All right, I just had, you know, a couple of questions. I noticed the town shop was surveyed.
Yes, that is for the carrier neutral location of the broadband.
Oh, okay.
That building is going to set up at the shop.
Oh, okay.
So that's what the survey and all the, everything was done for.
All right, cool, thank you. Yeah, then I had another question. How does the town deal with their IT services? Do they go out to bed every few years? Or is it just kind of a, a known thing that they're always, it's always gonna be the one company doing it?
We've had the same IT service provider since I've been here, so I, I can't, I can't answer that question exactly. But it looks like Sheila might.
I can't give you a date certain off the top of my head, but it's probably been, I would say 10, 12 years at least, since we've had the current company working with us.
Okay, thanks. No, I, it was just, I was just kinda thinking, you know, I don't know if that's something we should put to bed cause I know a while ago, we had a discussion about that with the town engineer, you know.
You know, it's not a bad, it's not, it's not at all a bad thought. And we, we should probably look at those things every year or when we think someone's prices are, have gotten too high. Honestly, with the current provider, he kept his, I believe he kept his fees for Silt, what I looked, what I thought was artificially low for a while. I think only the last couple of years has he actually even raised them. Amy, would, would you agree with that?
Yes, he had it at 1,000 for quite a while. When I first started at the town, we had Paul Fondre, was, no, not Paul Fondre. Doug, what was his name, Sheila?
Doug Spike.
Doug Spike, thank you. And then we went to Micro Solutions. And last year it was $1,250 a month, and this year is 1,500 a month. So, and he's, they're at our, I don't wanna say beck and call, but-
Pretty much.
I mean, Wayne comes pretty quickly and they're always available by phone. I think they, they've done a great job for us.
Okay, thank you.
Let me know if you do wanna think about it. Coming up with the document, I'm happy to help out.
Okay, thank you.
And Nicole isn't here tonight, but what is the town's code on RVs? Isn't it 14 days they can be somewhere? Before they have to be moved?
I'm waiting for someone else to answer that question.
I believe it, I believe it's 14 days for a calendar year. I don't think it's like 14 days and then they can move it for a week and then come back for 14 days. I believe it covers for a calendar year.
Okay.
The 14 days covers camping. RVs are allowed to be parked on the street as long as they have current registration. They can't, they can't stay in it for more than 14 days, as Ms. Amy said, in a 14 day, in a calendar year, unless they get authorization or a special event or something, and that's ran through the police department.
Oh, okay. But, you know, say if they're on public or private property, they could, is it still the 14 days or?
If they're on private property, we, it's on their property, but it's the camping. If they stay there for more than 14 days, it's still camping within town.
Okay, okay. And, and the only reason I bring it up is because the old Tim's Tools building, the La Placida store, it appears there's an RV that's been there for a couple of weeks now. And it kind of appears that somebody's living in there. And I just, you know, I don't think that's a good look for our downtown, to have people living on, in RVs in downtown. So that, that's what, that's why I brought it up. You know, cause one person does it, then, you know, somebody else to do it, then it morphs into, you know, a dozen trailers on Main Street.
I'll have a look at it in the morning.
Okay. All right, and I know I'm, one more. Hey, is, is there any possibility we could, we could ditch the COVID banner above the, the front door of Town Hall?
I looked at that last couple of weeks ago and thought the same thing. I can't remember what it says.
Then it's time for it to go.
Just answered the question.
I think we can, if we can find something suitable to take its place, we should, we'll, we'll, we'll take care of it. Good, good thought.
I guess good job, staff, keep up the hard work.
United to stop the spread is what it says.
I think that's what it is, yes. So anyway, then that's all I have.
All right, trustee Seifert?
How did the last DMV to go, go, go over, how many people did you have?
When I talked to Ivy after it was done, she said it was slower. She only had around a dozen people at that, but still it was a, a nice little flow all day long, so.
I know she told me that she thought the weather impacted it some, cause we-
Right, cause it was snowy that morning, cold.
When's the next time she's gonna be here?
She'll be here on May the 17th.
I told her we'd do a better job of publicizing it this, this time, try to get it in the paper again.
I did receive a call from Leonardo, who works for the Department of Revenue. And he is, he got a contact name from us for the paper. He'll actually put it in the paper. He provided us with flyers, both in English and Spanish, with the next three dates that we have posted on the, the front door. He emailed Nicole Media to put on our Facebook and the, the town's social media pages.
All right.
Perfect.
Awesome, thank you. Trustee Britton?
Last Tuesday, I attended the Garfield County Weed Board Meeting, quarterly Weed Board Meeting. Not a whole lot, they did talk a lot about, a lot of places are utilizing bugs and different things to mitigate some of the weeds, like NAP weed and some of those things. Much better than spraying and some of those other things that we do, or that are done to re-control them. But nothing crazy other than that going on with that.
Trustee Flores?
Yeah, along with Silt Cleanup, remembered the brush and tree limbs that are protruding over the sidewalks, to get those chopped down and pushed back. Otherwise, that's it.
Mayor Protem Henry?
Two quick things. The Governance Council for the SSWN Social Setting for Withdrawal Management Group, that's the group that Debbie Wilde was in front of us a few months ago, they met last week. The Detox Center that was originally supposed to open in the spring is now expected to open in October. The delays are due to construction and materials, something specifically involving electrical equipment. So I offered that they could look on eBay, we'll see what they do with that. But that seems to be the driver of the delay. The other thing I have is, is a request for people driving through downtown now that it's getting warmer out. And I was out there with my own kids over the weekend and people coming through the roundabout and then going down Main are going incredibly fast. And with the church on Main Street now and more and more people just generally being out and about, it's getting more threatening with people. And maybe it's due to the highway construction, I don't know, but please slow down.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's it.
On that point, can we talk to CDOT again about lowering our speed limit through town?
I'll try.
If we have to do the Newcastle thing of putting in a bike lane to be able to get it reduced, maybe we look at, at doing that.
I think I'll pass the post office, it could be 10 and they still do 50, 60. I mean, they go flying past. Once they get to Master Petroleum, it is-
The race is on.
Yeah, I don't think it's a question of the policy of the speed limit, it's an enforcement.
An enforcement, yeah.
You know, you see one or two people get pulled over, you're going to learn that it's not the right place to do it.
There's something I saw up in Granby that they do, because we've talked about ways of making crossing Main Street safer. It's one of the things they have in Granby, it was kind of weird, I saw somebody walking across the street and they had this flag thing that they were waving as they were walking across the street. What they had is on each side of the main, where the crosswalks are, they had like little holders that had these flags that you could put in there. And so then somebody could grab it as they're walking across the street, you can kind of, to just draw attention to a pedestrian walking across versus that. I mean, it may not be the most high-tech thing, but it could be something to, to think about, something like that, maybe? I don't know. It's just something that would draw extra attention.
The crossing.
What?
Where are we at with that, by the post office, that crossing? Does that kind of fall through the woodwork or is that still in the works or?
I have the paperwork from CDOT. We have to get traffic counts, pedestrian counts, bicycle counts, and all of that.
When you're going to start counting, let me know and I'll just go back and forth.
Yeah, let's have a parade that day and just stream through.
And so we have to get counts done and fill out the paperwork and then submit it to CDOT.
So does the counts, is that the thing we put across the road or physically you have to have somebody do it?
We're going to have to physically have somebody do it because the thing across the road's not going to count pedestrians and bikes.
You could have the thing across the road, count the vehicles going by, but it wouldn't count the pedestrians.
And we have our own counter. We bought one a couple of years ago that will do a traffic count, speed analysis and things like that.
Jeff needs something to do on Sunday afternoon.
I'm an A Jeff now.
He's out there with a clicker.
Get him a lawn chair.
Clicker for bicycles, a clicker for this and-
It's just nearby your house, Jerry, you can sit out there in your lawn chair.
They go, they go flying too fast.
Well, the thing is, my, the thing is, I was somewhat joking about me doing it extra that time, but something like that, right now, people aren't utilizing as much as they would possibly walking over there because it's not safe. So it's kind of one of those, you can't get an accurate count of what the actual path, the usage would be when it's not safe.
Because it's going to go up when it's there. If you build it, if you build it, they will come, right?
Stuff that people could actually walk safely, a lot more people probably walk over there.
Probably. You're correct, but again, we're talking about the state, which we've already talked about some of those programs.
Let me know what day you're counting and we'll, we'll do some walking.
We'll get a parade going.
We'll do it, yeah.
Sure.
The only thing I had is, at our last board meeting, we had voted to extend the Camarillo final plat. I just wondered if they've been communicating with us, if anything's moving along.
Yes, we did get-
Yes, go ahead.
We did get some emails from them on, oh, I forget when it was, but we have got some information from them on site plan utilities. I would have to look, but-
So they, we have at least heard something from them?
Yes, part of it was, part of it was the letter of credit amount and working with the engineer and with Mark Chain to understand exactly what that amount would be. So I think they've agreed to what that, that number is. Thank you for reminding me. There has been some movement.
Some movement.
Okay.
Along with the sidewalks being cleared of tree branches and stuff, is there any way we can draw a cool little picture that shows how high they're supposed to be trimmed above the sidewalk and stuff and include it in the, the water bill? So people know what it's supposed to be?
Or the newsletter? Yes, we have, it is in code what it is supposed to be, so we can, I think it's eight foot.
Yeah.
Don't quote me on that, but we can look in code and get something to put in the newsletters and everything else.
Yeah, I think there are a lot more people out walking now. I try and get out and walk and it is, it's springtime and the branches are, are face level or, or thrown out to the street at this point, so.
And you're not even eight feet tall.
And I'm not even eight feet tall, so.
You're pretty tall, but not eight feet.
So, yeah, so that'd just be good, I mean-
We can get it, maybe Amy is our resident artist or-
I think we had one at some point, if it's not in code already.
I've never seen some kind of-
We sent a diagram of a person standing on the sidewalk in the tree. Yeah. So.
Amy might be, Amy might be prettier.
Other than that, I've got nothing else, so.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion adjourned by Trusty Seifert, second by Trusty Brittonall, all is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.